It has been like this year, I think it's maybe because we're not in person. But two things we're going to talk about tonight, we are going to talk about state aid. Now that the state budget has passed and then we are going to go over a draft overall 2122 school year. Budget with you. So I'm going to skip directly to state aid. Excuse me while I'm a little punky with screen sharing, so. Okay. So on Wednesday, April 7th, just about a week late, the 2021 state budget was finalized and passed. It included record levels of state aid and other notable successes for schools. It really was night and day from the governor's proposal in January. It was actually very unbelievable to me. We had several conversations with people at the state level throughout the month of February and March. And they really understood. What? The financial issues that the school districts would be facing predominantly if the governor's proposal proposed. Items were. Came into reality, but also with using the federal stimulus monies that schools have been allocated. To fill the state's budget gaps as opposed to allocating that money for school districts to do. What we need to do with that money. So unbelievable and I would say probably unprecedented final state budget. So there overall, the highlights of the state budget was a $3.06 billion state aid to education increase. Of that, 1.4 billion is foundation aid increase and they also set forth a plan. To fully fund our state aid formula, our foundation aid formula over the course of the next three years. They allocated the 12, more than $12 billion of federal stimulus funds to school districts. And as I mentioned, that's separate from our general fund state aid. They added over $100 million in new funding for pre kindergarten. They reject the governor's proposal to consolidate and eliminate the expense based aid. So transportation aid, BOC's aid, et cetera. And then they also expanded the costs eligible for transportation aid from last spring. I believe we've talked about this, but just to recap your memory on that. This December, we were given a memo from the state aid. Unit that indicated that our transportation costs from March through June. Any transportation costs incurred would not be aided. So most districts, first of all, had their bus drivers or their contract bus companies. Delivering meals, delivering instructional materials, but also many of us. We were told to continue to pay employees by the governor. So we also had quote unquote standby costs that we incurred and. Six months later, we were told that they weren't going to aid those, which seemed a little backward. So this budget has basically said all costs incurred in the last school year after the shutdown will continue to be aided. So that's great. So let's all talk a little bit about how Lancaster fared in the state budget. On the screen, I have the. Final state aid run on the top, it has the 2021. Aid amount. So that's what we're actually receiving this year. I'm going to try to keep this as simple as possible. Comparing this to the governor's run gets confusing. And then also just going through this and taking out the pieces that don't belong because they're not general fund also gets a little confused. So certainly chime in if I'm either going into the weeds or I'm confusing. So we talk about this every year. Universal pre K aid is included on these aid runs, except for we are required to account for that. Program in our federal fund, so it is not part of our general fund expenditures or revenues. So we don't budget in our general fund for this revenue. It goes in on this federal fund side, which is not part of the budget that's voted on. So we always take that out to see what our bottom line is. So ultimately this year, we're actually receiving $38.6 million in state aid towards our general fund. The 2021 proposal from the approved budget does have some tweaks also. You'll know also in orange as the university, universal pre K program was in this current years aid above. Is $999,000. Whereas for since the inception of the UPK aid, we've been receiving $340,200. So that is a huge leap for us. This.
Amy. I've got this in my packet, but I'm not seeing it on the the screen. I've been seeing a blank.
It says I'm screen sharing. You guys aren't seeing the aid run?
No, I'm I'm seeing right now, I'm seeing your PowerPoint or whatever.
See the slides on the left side, but nothing. There we go.
Yeah, that's why I left and came back. I thought it was just me because nobody else was saying anything. So I left and came back hoping that it was just me.
All right, Jamie.
I feel like Dr. Valley. So I'll, I'll do my first disclaimer. Let me know if I get in the weeds, if I get confusing or if what I'm talking about isn't on this. So. All right, I'll do, I know what came in your packet didn't stand very well. The colors didn't show up, but. We're not too far. So the university, universal pre kindergarten aid, the $990,000, $650,000 jump over what we're currently getting. That is not included in the general fund because the expenditures are in revenues are accounted for in the. So we have not had time yet to. Figure out what that looks like and how we can spend that money and what any program changes would look like. But that's certainly something we'll report to you down. We also have our foundation aid 20. This is our largest foundation aid increase since 2008, 2009. It is a $2.2 million increase over this current year in foundation. The last time it was increased that much was in year two. Foundation aid actually being a formula that was enacted. So. That is monumental. We've had several years that that has been frozen. Same amount of foundation aid for a few years in a row. We had several years which aid was taken away. In turn. The gap elimination adjustment, the DRA. Also. We've also had years that it went up a few thousand dollars, $100,000. So this $2.2 million is a big deal. Part of that unprecedented state aid year for us. It also. Has moved us closer to being fully funded in accordance with our foundation aid formula. So when foundation aid was started in 2007, 2008. There was a five year phase in period to get up to the formula amount and then there was. Recession and budget, state budget deficits and those types of things. So we've never been close. Overall, since 2007, 2008, if we were going by the formula, we should have received a total of $131 million. Over the course of the last 12 years that we have not received. So anyways, our foundation aid amount fully funded would be about $30 million. So we're about $6 million below that. They have vowed to phase that in over the next three years. So we should be at our fully. Full formula amount in the course, over the course of three years. But this is the closest we've ever been to the actual full funding. So. The next group of aids, BOC's aid, high cost aids, access cost aid, those are both special education costs. Hardware and software, textbook, transportation, building aid, those are all expenditure driven aids. So those are all aids that are estimated based on what they think we're going to spend in this current school year. So we do as every year have adjustments to the transportation aid. It's very overstated and typically our estimate is more spot on to what we actually receive. So that's adjusted here and our building aid is also adjusted based on. Some paperwork. We know when we will be submitting and when that aid will start. So overall for. 2122, when we take out the pre K aid. And then we adjust the transportation and building aid to amounts that we feel are. More accurate that we have a total state aid budget of $41.7 million. So that would be a just over $3 million change from what we actually received this year. And what we would be budgeting to receive next year. My screen sharing right now. Can you guys see a spreadsheet? No.
We're just seeing, seeing you.
Just me.
If you need a little help, I can come over there and help you.
I might, I might need your mic. I'm sorry. All right. How about now?
There you go.
Perfect.
Okay.
Makes me feel so much better.
Oh, man, I hate screen sharing. Comparing the 2122 executive budget to the 2122 legislative budget. We had about a $2.4 million increase. But beyond that great increase is that a lot of the things that we already discussed at the beginning that the governor proposed went out the window such as. Lumping together those three expense based aids and getting off of the formula where they would aid your actual expenditures. He also had. Proposed to do some changes with STAR, which at the point we were. Presented this to you, we didn't really understand them. Luckily that went away, so we don't have to understand it. There's two additional things that are included at the bottom of the aid run. Page and those are our stimulus funds. Those are not going to be accounted for in the general fund. They are going to be able to be used over the course of three years. They are going to have requirements about what they're used on. They can't be used completely to supplement what we're already. What we already have in our budget and just kind of foot the bill instead of the general fund budget footing the bill. There will be some requirements for us to address the learning loss from the past couple of years. Or from the past year. So we are still waiting on guidance on that, but. In total, we're getting over $9 million in stimulus. And that is beyond what we received. At the beginning of this fall for care, which they called the CARES Act stimulus funds and that from that we received about $600,000. That is in this year's budget and paying for certain COVID related expenses. But this $9 million is separate. It'll, it's not part of the proposed budget. It's accounted for in a different fund and we'll be able to use it over multiple years. So as more guidance is released on that, we'll be coming up with a plan of how to use that. And I'm sure we'll present that to you for your knowledge. So now we can look at this current year's budget versus next year's budget in terms of state aid. Overall, it will be a $3.2 million increase. We have $2.2 million in foundation aid. The pandemic adjustment has gone away. Our transportation aid is going to be relatively flat. We're expecting an increase of about $75,000 in building aid. Our BOC's aid will be increasing this over $400,000. And our excess cost aid will be increasing over $70,000. So overall, this 21, 2021 budget versus 2122 budget chart is what you're going to see in the bud. The, you know, the budget that we're going to present in just a minute. Does anybody have any? State aid questions before we move on? Okay. I'm getting the hang of the screen sharing. So the 2122 draft expenditure budget as of today is at 117,920. 117, I'm sorry, I can't say it. I'm going to round it up to 118 million as we talk about it. That is an increase of $3.4 million over our 2021 budget. And that is 2.99%. This budget maintains all current programming, programs and staff. This budget increase is actually spot on with our 10 year average of budget to budget increases. So just under 3%. We have made to this budget $2.7 million in reductions from the original draft that we had put together. Back in February. That includes reductions to supply and contractual increases. Finalization of several other budget and service estimates such as utilities, our BOC's services. Our employee benefits, you know, we've learned. Some of the rates and percent increases have been finalized on those benefits. And we've also been able to reduce about 17 FTEs of staffing in corresponding benefit reductions. And those reductions are not layoffs. They are. Positions that are vacant and we've been able to keep vacant due to attrition. So it's not any new layoffs or cuts or anything like that. If we look at it in a different way. The major sections of the budget, general support, instruction, transportation and undistributed. General support is about 10% of the budget. That is the same amount that it is every year, 10% of the overall piece of the pie. The increases in that section are due to contractual salary increases predominantly. We also have the building condition survey, which is about $165,000. Which is required for us to do every five years in 2021 is our year that we need to do it and submit it. New York State to receive aid on that back in the following year. We've also had some small changes in our BOC services in this section and also. Just small annual service contract increases. The instructional portion is 53% of the overall budget. The increases are predominantly due to salaries. BOC's costs. Also two really identifiable changes in this section. If you looked line by line. Is that move from our, of our ESL teachers from our 2110 budget code to 2259. So there's a big negative in 2110, but it makes up for it in 2259. That's due to changes in the New York State Uniform Accounting Guidance that we had to make. We also were able to move the school physician from 2015 to 2060. As it's now BOC's aidable costs. So in the following year, we will be receiving BOC's aid back on the cost of that requirement. The transportation budget is 7% of the overall budget. But on with how much it always, what piece of the pie that always has. The increases are due to salary, contractual salary increases. And then also about $90,000 in. That we've estimated our contract transportation to go up. The whole transportation section is offset in large part by transportation aid on the revenue side. The undistributed portion is 30% of the budget. And that is again typical for what it is each year. The full increase there, this section is made up of employee benefits and debt service. The debt service is about flat. It's actually reduced by about $62,000. So the full increase is attributed to benefits costs. So. Much of that is out of our hands. The pension system rates, the social security payroll tax rates. The performance of our health insurance plan. So most of that increase is. Not, nothing that we're able to, to change. The good news is must, much of the full undistributed budget. But also the increase is offset by building aid and reserve use on our revenue side. So. Look at it one other way, based on the object in is basically what type of expense each of the expenses throughout the budget are. The instruct, the salaries and benefits. So the instructional salaries, non instructional salaries, employee benefits. Adds up to $86.6 million of the $118 million budget. 70, that is 74% of our overall budget. Last year salaries and benefits was 74% of our overall budget. Year before that, same thing. So again, same piece of the pie. Of the $3.4 million increase in the overall budget, $2.6 million of that is attributed to salary and. Benefits increases. So 75% of the overall increase is also attributed to salaries and benefits. So beyond salary and benefit changes. Are the contractual line about half of that increase is related to that building condition survey. We have also have about a $50,000 increase in tuition that we're expecting to have to pay to the charters. And that $90,000 that we are anticipating. Our bus contract to increase. The BOC services line, a lot of that increase is attributed to remote learning mechanisms. Our licensing for certain softwares, our homeschool monitoring, our local live streaming service, which we're on tonight. Several softwares like Amplify Science, Google, our MiFi's. And those are things that we're expecting to have to continue into next year. And then another large part of that increase, about $350,000 is. Changes in our special education enrollments through BOC's programs and also an elimination of one of their programs. Which is going to cause us to have to place some of our students in some higher tuition. Types of programs. And then with respect to the benefits, we're expecting our health insurance to go up about 10%, Which is a million dollars. Are the employee retirement system. It's slated to go from 16.2% contribution rate to 18.3%. And then also TRS is expected to go from 9.53% to 9.8%.
Hey Jamie. And this is a point of clarification every time, not clarification, but just. Important context. I think you said the number was 2.8. That essentially is tied towards contractual. Sort of increases. I mean, that's a. It shows you just how little wiggle room you have, right? Or how much control you have when you think about contracts that are set sort of in stone. So that leaves you what? 600 grand? You're, you're, you're trying to keep as tight as you possibly can. So. That's just something I keep in the back of my mind. We're talking about budget increases. To frankly, limit your true increase to such a small number. In face of contractual implications, I think is really important to point out for all of us because it's, um, it's such a heavy component of it. And the, and the true space that you play in is very, very small place. So you say things like, you know, the biggest driver of that. Then you say 300,000, you're like, well, wait a minute. In the context of a $3.4 million gain, that's all we're talking about, right? That's, that's really important to note. So I appreciate that clarification. It's always helpful to hear that.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I think. To piggyback off of that. The increases outside of our faculty and staff. Are minimal because those are always typically where we can control, have more control. But we also would always prefer to limit those increases in order to not have to make adjustments on the. We are in the people business and we employ a lot of people. And that's what we need to operate our business. So we'd prefer to, you know, limit other areas in order to keep that core. Faculty and staff. Here. All right. All right. So we'll move on to revenues. The voters. On May 18th vote on the overall expenditure budget. So be, so what I've just. Previously presented to you. They do not vote on the revenue budget. They do not vote on the tax levy. They do not vote on the tax rate. But we are required as we present the overall expenditure budget to provide. A revenue estimate that balances with the expenditures that we're presenting. So. That's just my annual reminder of that. So our property tax levy. And we'll go into this a little further after this slide is budgeted for $57.8 million. Which is a 1.5% increase over this current year. We've done some scrutiny of certain revenues, our Erie County sales tax, our interest income. To see where we think those are going to fall this year, how they're performing and what we expect for next year. We were. Really kind of on pace with what we budget. Which is surprising, but it's happening. So we were able to keep sales tax revenue and our interest revenue projections flat from this current year. On the other major increase is a state aid, which we've already talked about. On the reserve and fund balance side. We are appropriating $5.2 million from our reserve funds in this budget. Along with just under $3.5 million of appropriated surplus, which is funds that go unused this year that we're going to carry over to next year. In order to not have to raise that money through. So. When you look at the revenue portion of the pie, the property tax portion is 49%. And that's down almost 1% from the previous year. So the community's portion is. Smaller portion than typically and in past years. State aid is about 3, 35.5% of the pie. And that is an increase of about a. One and a half percent. From previous years and our reserves and appropriated fund balance typically holds around 8%. And this year is 7.5%. We did increase the appropriated surplus from this, this year to next year. And our reserve funds are being used to the maximum that they're able to be allocated in accordance with the laws that govern. The use of the reserve. So we are maximizing what we can budget for out of our reserve funds. Dr. V.
Yeah. So at this point, I just wanted to say that $118 million budget is not done by one individual or two individuals or whatever. In fact, it's done by literally hundreds of individuals. For literally hundred, excuse me, thousands of children and for a Lancaster community. You know, so at this point, I'd just like to thank all of those individuals from teachers and support staff and department chairs and principals and supervisors and directors and assistant superintendents. And of course, you know, the business office and Jamie Phillips are bringing it all together. Bringing all that input together in the form of this overall budget. But especially I'd like to thank you, thank the Board of Education. Many people don't realize this, but there's many meetings and this is a line by line thing. The Board of Education gets everything. And it's a lot of time and effort and it is greatly appreciated by me and so many others. So as far as this budget is concerned here. You know, the tax levy for this year, if the board is amenable to this budget is $57,777,319. Again, it's under the cap and. You know, that's 2.58% was our maximum allowable. This budget is, you know, an increase of the. Of 1.5%. And the estimated tax levy increase is $614,000 below the tax levy cap. So. Next slide. So the next pieces that we have to go are, this is again, the. So the next pieces that we have to go are, this is again the final budget meeting for the Board of Education. The budget was presented to the board for approval, formal approval on April twentieth. And, you know, we will present the two thousand twenty-one budget to the community. That's done at the annual budget hearing, which is on May tenth. And then again, once again, we'll have a vote, which will be held at May, on May eighteenth for the community to come out and weigh their, their opinion and voice on it and hopefully support. So that's where we stand at this point and we're open to questions or comments.
I think just each and every year I've been on this board, really hard work went into crafting this budget. You know, this year we got, you know, we were fortunate that the state and the federal government stepped up and really, you know, put money towards education because, you know, we would have, you know, had to make some, you know, serious decisions had they not. And hopefully as a country, we'll, we'll continue that supporting education. You know, we're one, one percent below the maximum allowable this year. I think that is huge. You know, with six hundred and fourteen thousand is a, you know, a lot of money. So I'm glad that we're able to, to not include that in the budget. And, you know, hopefully the community supports us because it, it, it looks really good. And I really appreciate the hard work by you, Dr. Valley, Ms. Phillips and the rest of the team.
All right. Thank you very much. And that's all we have for you. If there are no other comments, that wraps up this evening's presentation.
I do have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I had spoken with Mr. Sage and Dr. Valley. I will not be at the meeting on the twentieth. So I just wanted to take an opportunity here to voice my strong support for the budget. And I hope the BOE members at the meeting do approve it. That's all.
Thank you. All right, then. I think we'll end the local live and end this meeting. And for everyone that is listening, we will have the next board meeting for board members in person. And that'll be April twentieth again. We'll be at the high school. There will be opportunities to, you know, phone in if you so choose and those kinds of things. And then we will be using local live to, to view that meeting from home for the whole community. There won't be in-person for visitors or those kinds of things, but everyone will be able to see the meeting live and to interact with the Board of Education. But for the board and myself, I know we're both, we're all excited to get back to seeing each other and working in person. So it's going to be exciting April twentieth, I think, or at least I'm excited about it. I think everyone else will too. So everyone have a great night. Thank you so much.
Good work.
Just could I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Hi. All right, have a great night, guys.
Be here, yes.
Bye guys.
See ya.
Bye bye.